Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to our May 27th, 2021 City Council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk, present in the council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government, and we ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I'll call this meeting to order, and our invocation will be given by Bishop Sam Haunt from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Good to have you here, Sam. And if we could all please stand, after which we'll have our pledge of allegiance.
Our Father in heaven, we bow our heads before thee this evening in gratitude for the many blessings we've received. We're thankful to be back in this building. We're thankful to be in this wonderful land, in this beautiful city that we have to live in. We're grateful for those who serve our country, protect, and our first responders, and those who are helping manage through this pandemic. We ask to please bless us at this time with good health, and a blessing be upon the members of this council that they can have good judgment and have thy spirit to lead and guide their decisions. We pray for the families and individuals in our community, and those who are struggling and need assistance at this time. Help us to build, lift those around us. We love thee, and we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Here.
Councilmember Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Mr. Larson, would you mind stepping up to the podium, please? Whereas Eric Larson has worked tirelessly during the COVID-19 crisis, we hereby proclaim him a hero of the city of St. Cloud for the following actions. Whereas when the COVID crisis hit, pharmacists Eric Larson and Prescriptions Unlimited were able to source and deliver personal protection gear to first responders in the St. Cloud Police Department, St. Cloud Fire Department, Lake Wells Police Department, and other entities who, without Eric's hard work on delivering these masks, gowns, and other protective gear, would otherwise have had to operate in dangerous conditions. This was most impressive since all other traditional sources were unable to meet the requests. And whereas Eric Larson and his St. Cloud Prescriptions Unlimited team played a crucial role in COVID-19 testing early during the crisis and saved thousands from driving long distances to get such a test, Eric also personally oversaw testing for the St. Cloud Police Department and the city of St. Cloud, hereby allowing our first responders and St. Cloud city personnel to continue serving the great people of St. Cloud without interruption. And whereas when the COVID-19 vaccine became available, pharmacist Eric Larson has worked without ceasing for St. Cloud residents with his drive through operation at Prescriptions Unlimited. Also, Eric has continued to provide similar medication to critical St. Cloud personnel, allowing the city the freedom to continue operation and serve the great people of St. Cloud. And whereas pharmacist Eric Larson has also been personally administering the COVID-19 vaccine to thousands of Osceola County residents via personal visits by himself and staff, Eric has been operating throughout Osceola County without regard for monetary compensation. Eric has put the needs of our local residents first. And whereas during the COVID-19 crisis, pharmacist Eric Larson has continued to provide critical support services to the most vulnerable of our population by his weekly services at the council, Osceola Council on Aging. And now therefore, I, Nathan Blackwell, Mayor of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, recognize May 27th, 2021 as Eric Larson Day in the city of St. Cloud. And I must say, you are indeed a local hero, and we appreciate your incredible service and the way that you have certainly made a significant difference in our city. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a word?
Thank you, Mayor Blackwell, and thank you to the community. I'll be brief. I did not know any of this was really happening until I got a call last week. To be honest, I don't think I deserve anything, any other accolades or anything for that matter. I do it because I actually love what I do, and I love the people of this community and every community. If I could, I would have done it for the entire state of Florida, but I wasn't able to. So it's actually my honor, my blessing, to be able to do it for everyone in this room, and our loved ones, and the community. So, thank you.
Utilities Director.
Good evening, Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. You may remember that last week at the workshop that I gave an update on what happened with the watercolor issue, with the resin issue. So, you know, what happened? We know the polishing filters failed. New polishing filters were installed. They were putting into operation in 2019. It took some time to get those online because they're very specialized. And are we done? No. Most of the resin has been removed, but we'll continue to clean the water until all of it's out. And I went through all of the miles of pipe that we've cleaned and that we're going to continue to clean. So the map of the areas that we've cleaned. And on the agenda this week is an agenda item to add additional ice pigging and additional 27 miles and the subdivisions that we'll be focusing on, and continuing our maintenance flushing. So this is a graph, and you'll remember this graph, of the customer calls and the contacts. And you see a few blips, and often if we are doing some flushing, we might get some calls. But we're not getting the calls that we think we need to be able to help solve the problem. So my customer service manager, because we all care and we want, we're here to solve this problem, has been monitoring social media, and when she becomes aware of a watercolor issue, she'll, will try to figure out where the address is and see if we can go find the source of the problem and address it, and then put it on the list for the cleaning. So we did do that even today. We went out and flushed a customer's pipe. We believe that's the customer that had the problem on social media, and the customer wanted to know why we were there and what, you know, where's the work order, who put the work order in? So just in case you're asked, it's me that put the work order in. We put that in through, not me personally, but staff, because we want to solve this problem, and we need your help, and we need our customers' help. We need them to let us know, and we, and we're here, we're gonna, we're gonna clean this pipe until it's clean. We care, we're out there, and, did I miss anything?
Cameron Crandall, Deputy Director. I just want to reiterate the need for customers come talk to us because that's how we base what we're gonna do in the future. That's how we determine where we're gonna ice pig next. That's where we're gonna determine how we're gonna unidirectionally flush and do line swabbing. So if there's something else going on and we don't know about it, we can't fix it.
We can't fix it. So we did find the resin in that subdivision. It is not on the current list. It was ice pigged before. So I may have to come back to you and add some additional areas. But I just want to make sure that you know that we are additionally beyond all of the public outreach things that we've done over the last year since I've been here. And I've only been here a year. We're also doing what we can to monitor social media and solve the problems. So, thank you.
We are certainly incredibly grateful for all that you and the department are doing. Thank you so much for staying on top of this. This brings us to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested a completely signed in form to be provided to the residing officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. Is it Ms. Drake, Christine Drake? Is that correct?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Christine Lattes-Drake, and I reside in Pine Chase Estates. I came here tonight as a longtime citizen and of the community and a constituent and taxpayer. With me this evening, I brought three bottles of water from my tap that came out this morning, and I was the customer she was referring to. And I wanted to tell you, I've been dealing with this since 2016. I've sent emails, I've made phone calls, and I've even showed up in person. Initially, when I showed up in person, I was told I was on a well system, and I was there to pay my city water bill. So I don't know how that worked out, but I have been trying and trying and trying to get someone to help me for years. I've been confused. I had no idea what was in my pipes. I just knew it was coming out brown. I knew I wasn't the only one in my community after speaking with my neighbors. I felt alone because I kept trying to ask someone to help me. Where do I go? Where do I turn? I even changed pipes. In my home alone, I have had to switch out the following: one hot water heater, two toilets, three sinks, one tub, one garbage disposal, one clothing washer, two dishwashers, multiple showerheads and faucets, one refrigerator with a built-in ice maker and water dispenser, and multitude of clothing and linens that have been destroyed by the water, as well as faucets and showerheads. I'm standing here tonight to ask you, as a council, would you drink the water that I brought? Let me grab that real fast. This is what comes out of my tap. This is the second time since May 12th that I've been able to capture what's been coming out of my tap. And when it sets, there's quite a bit of things in the bottom of the tap. I'm gonna ask you this, because my family's been forced to drink it, and my family's forced to consume it and bathe in it. Would you do it? Would you ask your children, your grandchildren, and your family to do that? Because I have to. I mean, would you even put your boat in it? I guess that's my next question. I mean, it's corroded all my appliances, my fixtures. So I guess what I'm standing here asking is, because I pay a water bill, I've gotten nothing. I've gotten no reductions. I've gotten no help. I've gotten nothing. And I understand that their ice pigging has been going on, and I appreciate that. Thank you for bringing that to the people. But what are we gonna do? Because according to everything I have here, it was fixed. And clearly, my water's showing you it's not fixed. So I continue to pay a water bill every month, and I can't even consume it. So I guess I ask this: Ms. Matheny, you're a county employee as well. Can you find funding through them to help us? Mr. Hawkins has a relationship with you, Mayor Blackwell? Can you get him to get us some state funding? Because I can't continue to live like this. It's been five years in my home, and I've gotten nothing. It's not getting better. It's getting worse. And I know everybody sent someone to my home today to knock on my door, and of course, I didn't put my address out there. So, yeah, I asked who it was. I asked who gave the bill. Any answers?
I'll give you another minute or two. I'd like to listen. Go ahead.
I appreciate that, Councilman Cooper. You know, the frustrating part is, I pay for bottled water on the regular. I pay for two five-gallon jugs every time I go to fill jugs. The problem is, I can't afford to buy that separate water to bathe in. I can't afford to bathe my animals in it. I can't afford to bathe my four-month-old nephew that I help with. I can't afford to use, to wash my clothes with. So at this point in time, I don't know what I'm consuming through my pores. There's no long-term study. I can tell you that my husband's skin has changed since this has happened. I can tell you that he has dry spots, he has itchy spots, he has burning spots, and I know he's not the only one. As we all know, this has been going on for quite some time, and some of us, yeah, we take the social media because it's the only thing that we have. Because when I've come down here, when I've called, when I've emailed, I've gotten nothing. I'm tired of being turned away. I pay for this. I'm paying for this. It's not like it's coming to me for free, and we don't have the cheapest water rates here. There are people all over the state that pay a lot less than we do and have far better quality than we have. I mean, I can't imagine that anybody standing here can be some sort of empathetic. I know some of you grew up in this town just like we did. What do you want? What should we do? Where can I turn to if I can't turn to you guys? Who can I turn to? Who can help me? Anyone?
About a year ago, I tried to get whole-house filters.
I remember that.
So I tried to do that.
I remember that. And I have to say-
And I tried to give a break on the cost of your water bill.
Maybe I could afford a filter then. You know, I mean, I have to say, and I do, I genuinely appreciate what they're doing to try to help. I know that they're newer, but there's, this has been going on. I know for a fact that in 2016, it was recommended to be replaced. That didn't happen in 2016. Instead, it continued to saturate our pipes. It continued to saturate into our homes. It continued to destroy the things that are in my home, in my home, that I pay for, that I work hard for. Okay? Let me tell you, I can't tell you how much I'm grateful that Councilman Trace at least came to the table with something, that Councilman Cooper came to the table with something, anything to try to help us. I mean, it's not only, it's not only infuriating, it's nauseating. Sometimes the smell of the water when it comes out is disgusting. People send me pictures all the time, videos all the time. I mean, I've seen black water, black, pitch black, darker than my hair. I mean, that to me, you can't tell me that's healthy to consume. Nobody can tell me that that's healthy to consume. We're the long-term study. What's happening to me? Is this a carcinogen? I don't know. Do you guys know? Does anybody know? Who sits in here, right here above me, in front of me, and drinks the same city water that I do? You guys do? You drink it out of the tap?
Yeah, I do.
You keep it out of the tap? Well, I brought some, if anybody wants any. I'm willing to share. Sharing is caring. So anybody want to take some? It's here for the given. You know?
Ms., Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Ms. Craig, what are we doing in her community to address all these concerns? And also, I wanted to ask the city manager, we had a program at one point where people could turn in, like, all of the items that she's mentioned that's been damaged. Is there still an opportunity that she can turn in a claim to the city to cover some of those expenses?
That's correct. She could file a claim, all those things she listed. Chris, if you'll get with us, we'll put in a claim for you.
This has been going on since 2016. So initially, when I released my first item that I was aware that this was going on with, so I don't know that I have my receipts, but I'll gladly try to find them.
We will work with you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And if she could let us know what's going on in your community?
Absolutely.
And is there anything else that we can do to help her out? And all of her residents?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I have contacted.
I'm just, don't laugh, because all I can do is, I'm new, and I'm trying to solve the problem. And I live in the city, I'm a resident, and I drink the water, and I bathe in it, and I feel your pain. I want, but it meets all safe drinking water standards.
Okay.
But I want to fix this.
I mean, I'm blown away that this, this meets standards, because there's chunks. I mean, chunks. I don't even know what, what is it?
Iron.
It's, no, it's not iron. It's not iron. I'm telling you, it's not iron. Open it and smell it. That's not iron.
We're gonna sample it.
Okay. By all means, sample it. I wish to, and I'm keeping this bottle because, you know, obviously. But I'm gonna tell you that iron doesn't leave a slimy resin minutes after it touches-
I don't want to be an adversary. I want to help you.
I'm begging you to.
So please.
Ma'am.
You need to address the council. She's gonna get with you. She's gonna work with you. We're trying to solve this.
That's fine. I'll reach out.
And we've heard you.
Please. But I can tell you and assure you, I have reached out. My account should notify. I've been down there in person. I've emailed and I've called. And I'm not gonna lie, I've given up after a while. When you don't get any answers, people stop, they just give up. They give up.
So I've given her my card. I'm gonna invite her down to come talk with me. We'll look at her account and see, show her whatever we have, whether that's accurate or not, you know, and make sure that we follow through. So as I mentioned, I may have to come back with you. We've outlined where we have planned the ice pigging, but obviously, there are some additional areas. And so we're gonna continue this till we get it, till we get it right.
Absolutely.
Can we change the agenda item to include her area in this particular agenda item? So that it's in this-
I can give you, yeah, linear cost foot, and if we, well, I mean, it's up to you guys.
I mean, I, when this item comes up, I would, I would support, I don't know if we're allowed to do it, but change, you know, make sure that her area is covered.
You can authorize the city manager to expand the item to include that area.
Yeah, okay. We'll do that.
As long as you delegate the authority to him.
Okay.
Have you ever told me where I speak before? I don't know if that's accurate.
That is accurate, but again, this stuff is sneaky. So come down and we'll talk, or I'll come to you.
Okay.
It's up to you. I really, seriously, I care.
I'm serious.
That's why I bought a house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so do we have, so this area was done before, and I think we're doing Anthem Park again as part of this. I saw that in the map. So is that just, we're gonna have to keep on going, going back and forth to kind of chase it, chase it around? Is that, is that kind of what we're thinking?
Yeah. And whatever, if you want to talk about it, I'm ready to answer.
Ms. Drake, would you like to see this video now, or you want to see it later?
Glad to see it now, sir. That's okay.
Replay this video.
I'm ready to move on. Okay. Brandy James?
Good evening. I'm Brandy. I live on Zion Drive. I'm sure you all are well aware of who I am. I'm, in fact, the one that started the water page with one other person, because I've been dealing with this since 2016 myself. The community of Canoe Creek Lakes has really been, probably hit the hardest when it comes to this, seeing as we're the closest to the plant that was affected. I've had one-on-one meeting with Mr. Blackwell. I've sat with Brian Wheeler when he was the intern. I've sat with Cameron numerous times, and I am well aware that everybody is working on the problem, and I appreciate that. My problem is, is that, A, it's still happening. I understand you're working on it, but it's been five years, and you guys have been aware of it, of it for five years. I don't understand why it took so long to even get started. I'm angry. I'm hurt. My first time being on the news, I was pregnant. My son is three years old, and I have to bathe him in this water. You have children, don't you? No? You have children?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Could you imagine? This is my water right now. Not only that, this was in the back of my water when I pulled it out. This is metal chunks. So the ice pigging is obviously doing something to the pipes, and now I have metal chunks in the back of my toilet. I don't know what you want from me. I'm tired of being called a liar and saying that I'm spreading misinformation on the internet. I'm not. I sat with Brian Wheeler when he was intern. He looked me in the face and said that the resin going through the chlorination process with the contaminants from the ground could be a possible carcinogen. And the fact that you people are saying that this is not harmful when you actually have no data is infuriating. If you have the data, show me. Show me that it's safe, because until I see it, I don't believe it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the consent agenda? I mean, the citizens forum, I'm sorry. The citizens forum. Ms. Matheny?
Ms. James, is that a recent sample in your neighborhood?
Some day.
From today as well? And you are in different neighborhoods?
I'm in Canoe Creek Lakes. Yes. Pine Chase Estates. Would you like to see the metal?
Okay.
And, but, no?
Can you create, please?
No.
Pine Chase. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cooper?
Ms. James, it looks, it looks like we're going back over the same place again. We're gonna have to do the ice pigging and redo it secondary to try and get it clean.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
One more ice pigging. Are we ice pigging from the root of the problem? Are we coming out to the pipes that are going directly to the home? Because I do think that would make a difference. I do feel like if we're taking the arm and cleaning on the arm, it'll get to the hands and therefore, but if we're coming to the hands, secondly, and the pipes that are directly going into the home and not coming from the problem, is it really getting fixed? That's what I'm asking.
Yes, that's exactly what's been done.
Okay, so it's coming from the, from the plant itself?
They've started the source and moved out.
Okay.
Okay.
We were informed differently.
It's a lot of lines.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, announce the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. Mr. Surgeon, I think you were going to, first of all, pull an item. Pull item L, please, for a future meeting. Okay.
L?
Yes, L. Number L is being pulled. Councilmember Matheny?
Can we pull item C for a separate vote?
Would you tell me that item again?
C. Cap.
I still didn't hear you clearly. My-
C.
C. Thank you. Mr. Surgeon, do you have anything else? No, ma'am. All right. Mr. Cooper?
Item D.
D.
Item F. Item I. J. K and L. I've got several of them that I just want to be pulled to vote separate. And a couple of other questions.
L has already been pulled.
Yep.
I believe the first item was item C.
Yes, I would like to amend item number C to give the city manager authority to include ice pigging of the communities of Canoe Creek Lakes and Pine Chase Estates. I'd make a motion for that.
Do you, do you think 450,000, that's about 30% more? Do you think that's a-
I don't know if we have to put a dollar amount on it.
Just needs to be done.
I thought we did.
Well, it would be good if you could put a cap on it, maybe up to, if you wanted to cap up to 500,000.
Up to 500,000.
Would that work, Marjorie?
Yes, that'll work, and I can bring back the estimate. I so appreciate this.
Well, the city manager would just have to come back to you if it exceeds 500,000. You'd have to bring it back.
Right.
I've got several of them that I just want to be pulled to vote separate. And a couple of other questions.
L has already been pulled.
Yep.
I believe the first item was item C.
Yes, I would like to amend item number C to give the city manager authority to include ice pigging of the communities of Canoe Creek Lakes and Pine Chase Estates. I'd make a motion for that.
Do you, do you think 450,000, that's about 30% more? You think that's a?
I don't know if we have to put a dollar amount on it.
Just needs to be done.
Well, it would be good if you could put a cap on it, maybe up to, if you wanted to just cap up to 500,000.
Up to 500,000.
Would that work, Marjorie?
Yes, that'll work, and I can bring back the estimate. I so appreciate this.
Well, the city manager would just have to come back to you if it exceeds 500,000. You'd have to bring it back.
Right, so you can do it without coming back to another done item.
Exactly.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, will you recite your?
I'll make a motion to give the city manager authority to add Canoe Creek Lakes and Pine Chase Estates to the ice pigging with not to exceed a 500,000.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to amend item C. As stated, a second motion by Councilmember Matheny, a second by Councilmember Trace.
I mean, you public input on it too before?
I'm fixing to do that. Would anyone like to speak to this item?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. It looks like to me, we're going to spend a half a million dollars. We've already spent with the ice pigging, three or $400,000. We can buy that, we can buy a truck for somewhere around 100, 150,000, or, excuse me, for a million and a half, million, million and a quarter. That would have been money well spent if we would have bought the thing. We could have used it every month, week, day, year, years down the road, and keep it clean constantly. We could keep it moving. If you have to have parts, yeah, you're going to need parts. I'm sure it's going to break down. You'll fix it, and you could keep it going. That's how most people drive their cars now. You know, if you've got a 70,000 or 100,000 miles, you put parts on it and keep going. I think we, we're missing the boat of not looking for, asking the city manager to go back and take a look at this, this cost analysis of just buying this ice pigging outright where we could do it ourselves. And then we wouldn't be spending a half a million dollars here for a little hodgepodge is what we're going to do. That's what we're going to be doing, a hodgepodge. So, I feel like that we're, we're missing the boat. We're throwing money, good, good money after more bad money, I guess. And it just doesn't make good sense to me if you're going to spend, you know, eight or 900,000 that we've already going to be spent here in this, this expense. And we could just go buy it, be done with it, own it. And if we don't use it, we'll, we'll let Kissimmee, we'll rent it out to Kissimmee and make some money, or up to Orlando. We can use it, get it used, I'm sure. So, I feel like that, that's, that's one of my pitties on this one here, and I think we need to go back and look at this instead of.
That's a separate item from this vote here. Mr. Sturgeon, would you like to speak to that, since you brought it up?
We recommended not buying the equipment. And remember, last year, even during COVID, we were doing the ice pigging, and then the company went out of business, Suez. And a gentleman that worked for them actually purchased the vehicle. They're both used vehicles. We wouldn't want to buy one of those. If we did move forward, it would have to be a new design. And find the people that, we have to buy those plans from either Suez or another company.
Either way, I think we could buy something that would be paid for. We own it. We could use it every, every year or two in sections that you need to clean and re-go back and clean. It would be done. That's just a thought.
Councilmember Trace?
Did we ever put together cost benefit analysis and a breakdown on, on that machine? Because it's like buying a fire truck. Yeah, you can buy a fire truck. We need the whole crew trained, ready to go, staff, pensions, all that, you know? So, I didn't know if we had gone through that.
Mayor, could I ask the utilities director to address that?
Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. We did look at purchasing it, as you may recall. And at the time with COVID, the equipment, Suez didn't go out of business so much as they discontinued that part they were purchased and decided not to do it anymore. So, we were going to look at purchasing the equipment. It was in Georgia, and we requested that a condition assessment be done. The folks that manufacture it are out of Canada. And because of the quarantines and COVID, we were unable to get the condition assessment done at all. In the meantime, the folks that, or the, the crew, the guy, the lead guy that used to do it for Suez has, is working for another company, and he has now purchased the equipment. But he's in the process of purchasing it, or has purchased it. So, that equipment would not be available, and we were never able to look, you know, do a condition assessment. Because it uses salt and ice, it's something that can deteriorate. It sat there for months and months and months. And if you do purchase it, I mean, we can come back to you with a cost benefit analysis, but it does take, you have to have several crews. You have to have, I mean, it's, it's a lot to maintain it. It has to be maintained at least twice a year at a very high expense by the, you know, it's something that, and we have, we think that if we were going to do it, it would be a regional, something you'd want to do regionally, but so far, we haven't had.
So, is this group that bought it local, or is it out of?
Out of Melbourne.
Okay, out of Melbourne. So, it's not like we're having to pay for a hotel room every time they're here, they can drive back? Okay, so it's, has this been more cost effective than the last time? Because they kept on upping the price on us every time?
That is my understanding, that this is much more cost effective than it was before.
Okay, so if we can run down that analysis, that'd be great.
Marjorie, this looks like, it appears to me that you're either going to spend some kind of money to repair it and keep it going, or you're going to have to have dirty pipes that we got now, and we're not getting 100% clean, and we're having to go back a second time, maybe even a third. But if you buy something, and you've got it here, and it sits here every day, you can use it. Takes three or four employees to run it. I watched it.
Yes.
They can get it done, they can learn how to do it. It didn't, didn't look like rocket science to be able to do it, so.
I appreciate your comments, and we'll come back.
Thank you. I, I would support seeing that analysis as well. But also, we were told at the time that it's not made to do it every year over and over and over again to ice pig, you know? Because that was one of the conversations, was we could own it, and then we could go through the system over and over again. But my recollection was, we were told that you don't go back, you know? If you have an issue, you go back and tweak it, but it's not like we would go whole through the system every year. Is that still true, or?
When I say that we're going to continue to clean the pipes until it's gone, it's the three methods, you know, we use the swabbing in the long runs, and the ice pigging in the short runs, and the unidirectional flushing. So, you're right, normally, it is not done, it wouldn't be something that you do every year. And so, at some point, we would need to probably sell it. But, you know, we'll do the cost benefit analysis. We'll look at it.
I think you have three people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll have that done by next meeting.
We will. And, and if it's, if we're finding that the problem is widespread, I mean, we're just not getting the people, we're not getting customers calling us to let us know. So, again, it's really important, even the social media, media folks, if you can put me into contact with others, you know, that'd be great. We'll come back.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? We have a motion with a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
This motion was, tell me again what it's for.
The motion was to pass this with the amendment that, of the two subdivisions that she highlighted, and authorizing up to not exceed $500,000.
No, and I think we're going to have to spend a lot much more than that.
So, you're voting against doing this, then?
That's right.
Wow, okay.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one.
Brings us to item D. Mr. Cooper?
I look at this tool carrier, and it's about $110,000. We've got one that's got 1,600 hours on it. I don't think that's a lot of hours on a piece of equipment to go and use it for what they use it. I don't think they use it every day, unless they can show me the nuts and bolts that they're using it every day. I'm just, I just, you know, you spend $110,000 here, no problem. It's not cheap money, but to fix a ice piggy, no. We got to, we got to think about that real hard. So, I have a problem with this one, too. I want to vote that one, too.
Marjorie, do you want to speak to this?
Marjorie Craig, what's that? That's getting my steps in. I'm getting my steps in. That's what I'm here for. Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. So, this piece of equipment, the old piece of equipment is 1993? It's 24 years old, I know.
Seven.
Okay, 1997. 1997. And you mentioned the hours, but the hour meter, I probably should have never mentioned that, but that, because the hour meter broke, so it's not accurate. This was a hand-me-down piece of equipment that we have out at the wastewater treatment plant, and it was a side slope mower thing. This new piece of equipment is safer. It allows you to move the polymer totes around more safely, and also the sludge base, bins. So, it is used, if not every day, every other day. So, it is something that is used very often, and the safety of the staff is, and it's very critical.
An hour meter can cost less than $50 to put a new hour meter in there and add it and keep it going. These, this is parts and pieces that we can put on these things that you don't need to every five to seven years have a brand-new piece of equipment.
So, it's 1997, and it's not being replaced because of the hour meter. That was just the reference to, like, the number of hours on it. So, it's not dependable. It's constantly breaking down. Fleet has determined that it needs to be replaced, so we're recommending replacement. It doesn't start all the time. It's not, I mean, it's got constant, like, when they evaluate it, the number, if it comes up to a total of 15, it's supposed to be replaced. This one has like 36. So, it's, it's, really needs to be replaced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else to add?
Nope.
You want to go to item F?
Did, did he want to vote on that separately?
He didn't make, he didn't make a motion to do that.
Yeah, you want to move, yeah, let's move, let's, let's vote on D.
Motion to approve item D of the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, a second, Councilmember Matheny, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cooper?
Wait a second, stop. Would anybody in the audience like to speak to this item? Madam Clerk, please call the roll then.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one.
Item F. Mr. Cooper?
This is a polisher for plant number four. This is a, the valve that was, that would have, wasn't it, what is it? A valve?
Correct, valves.
Valves, excuse me. Automated valves versus going and doing it by hand. We're going to spend another, how much is it? $35,000. It just keeps adding up money, and it's easy to do, to buy new little pieces of equipment, but when we need something, for an ice pigging, that's on the furthest down the road that we'll look at it later, and we'll see if we need it justification until we spend a million and a half dollars, and we're getting close to a million. So, we're going to spend a million dollars on the ice pigging, and we don't have any, anything to count for it, other than, well, we got to go back over and do it again. So, that's not helping the citizens. It's just not getting anything done right. That's it, sir.
That's it. Just to comment. Item I, is that the next item you wanted to address?
Aye. Yeah, it's the same thing. It's a fence. We're going to bout the ballpark. Somebody tell me how we're spending $84,000. These gold-plated, or what? These are.
That's replacing the fences at our current ball fields.
I understand that.
That's what the cost of fence is now. And this is all went out to bid.
Councilmember Trace, would you like to come in?
If Councilmember Cooper's done?
Yes, go ahead.
And I had a friend message me the other day about kind of an unsafe condition in one of the dugouts due to the fencing. Is this, we're doing a safety assessment of all the fencing out there, and just making sure that we're correcting everything? Perfect, thank you.
Okay. That's it on that one.
Item K. Are you wanting a separate vote on that item?
Yes, sir, separate, just, just because it's Southern Pines, Phase Four. 152 more homes.
You have yet to comment?
Forty, 50-foot lots, 60-foot lots. There are some 40-foot lots.
Do I have a motion that we approve this item? Item K.
Motion to approve item K of the consent agenda?
I'll make that a second. I have a motion from Councilmember Trace, a second from the mayor. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one.
Have I missed any items that you wanted to discuss, Mr. Cooper?
You mentioned J, I thought.
J, yeah, I think I did, H I.
All right, I'm sorry if I missed J.
And then M as well.
Bill, can you refresh me on J?
Yes, sir, this is with the 65th North Group to do internal control assessment of our utility billing system, and also fraud prevention. So, this is to protect the assets, the money we collect and spend in the city. It's what's called an internal control audit.
They have to do that all the time.
Well, it's something new we've started. We started doing internal audits on the city last year, doing fraud alerts and looking for all kinds of things. It's a big problem across, government across the country, and so, I was proactive and started doing the fraud prevention assessments and internal controls.
I always look to the, to the west and the north, Orlando or Kissimmee. Do they do that?
I don't know if they use this company, but they do have internal control. Some of them have internal auditors. We do not, so we use an outside company to do that.
All right, that's it. Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, I didn't get that one finished. Thank you earlier.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to any other item on the agenda? Consent agenda? Yes. Please step to the mic, please. Say your name again.
My name again? It's Christine Ladisdrake. I reside in Pine Chase Estates. And I wanted to actually address Mr. Sturgeon, if possible, please.
Are you talking about a consent agenda item?
Yeah, there was.
Which one, please?
It was C.
C, C was already voted on.
I had asked.
Well, okay.
I had submitted, and I was told I could come. Okay, so, Mr. Sturgeon, my question to you is, and I appreciate, like, again, let me reiterate, I appreciate that someone came to the table with any kind of a solution. But, I mean, clearly, I'm going to have to say, the ice pigging hasn't been working so far, right? So, I guess my question is, when I, when we see you throughout the meetings, and you tell us that everything's okay and the water is good to go, but I saw a couple of meetings ago where you had said you put in for a $25 million grant to go ahead and get us off the MyX resin system, which we appreciate, we're grateful for. My question is, do you have any idea, are we going to ice pig before we try to do that again? Or are we going to?
If I could.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Please.
Yes, we were talking about getting a earmark from Congressman Soto's office, and we did not achieve that. We got it for another project. However, it's always been my belief that we need to get off the MyX system. I do not want our citizens to go through that again. Again, I got handled this problem, and the ice pigging has worked. But we know, like, like Marjorie says, it's sneaky, and it settles in the bottom of the pipes, and we have to go chase it. And we have done that, and like I said, even through COVID, we continue to flush, ice pig, and do that. And like I said, we're just going to keep after it. But we need to partner with you guys, and I understand you being upset.
Okay.
And if I was in your shoes, I would feel the same way.
I appreciate that.
And as the chief executive of this city, I'm embarrassed, too. And I said, we're not hiding ourselves, but we're going to keep after this. Please partner with us. Please let us know. Pick up the phone. If you don't get what you want, call my office. I will call you back.
If you have a card, I'd gladly take it, sir.
Absolutely.
I'd gladly take it. And I just wanted to add to the last point, that, you know, the reason that I stopped calling, and Ms. Craig, I believe you, Ms. Craig? You may not see my name on the account as having complained, because it's been years, because there was nothing coming of it. At that point in time, I felt like a broken record. Which brings me to the fact that we all know, Brandy and I, we are very active on social media, and we've been told that there's a political agenda behind our water, which I thought was hysterical. And so, for me, I just want to comment on that real quick. And so for me, I just want to comment on that real quick. To me, the political portion of it is, anytime I sit here and I see things like, I mean, just fences for a ball field, I'm all about Little League. I have six brothers. They all played. I love it. Great. But for me, until I have drinkable water, that to me shouldn't be a priority. There should be nothing on anyone's agenda other than my clean water and the water to bathe her children in and the water for everybody to bathe their babies in. That should be number one. There shouldn't be another thing put into this city for anything, sea planes, anything, until I can drink what comes out of my tap. I, I just, it blows my mind. To me, it's almost criminal. It's almost along the lines of what's going on in Flint, Michigan. And unfortunately, it took the citizens years upon years to be heard, but they've been heard. And let me tell you, there's nine folks in that, in government that are indicted because they listened and they heard, but they did nothing. And I don't want to seek it to that point. And I understand you inherited the problem. I understand Ms. Craig inherited the problem. But I also know it's been five years, and I'm watching all these things come in the city that are not pertinent, near as pertinent as clean water. That's it. It's, it's a human right. It's not that I'm asking for anything special. I'm asking for a human right.
No, I was just going to say, Chris, anytime I'll sit down with you.
I would love that.
Show you how we budget, because there's water funds and things like that.
I understand.
So we're not depriving the citizens of money to fix this problem by doing other things in the community. And like I said, I will assure you, we're going to continue to get after this. I've got the two best water people in the state working for me now, Marjorie Craig and Brian Wheeler. And they're doing a great job, and I'm sorry you're having bad water issues, and we're going to get it after it.
Okay. I appreciate it. I'm going to take up your card and I'm going to take you up on your offer.
Thank you. Would love to do that. Brandy, that goes for you too. Please come and sit down with me. Thank you.
Councilmember Cooper, you have something else?
Yes. I want to go back. I know we've already done C, but...
We've already voted on C. It's a done, settled issue.
I understand. I understand. I don't care about that. Mr. Sturgeon, I'd like to see that video.
That's up to the council.
No. I'm not fair to that. We need to move on.
You don't want to watch, you don't want to watch any dirty water run through.
We voted on this issue. We've settled it. We need to move on, Mr. Cooper.
All right, you don't want to see it. Okay, I've got L and L, L and M.
We have a vote.
L was removed from the agenda.
All right, M. Does it vote on that separate?
Would anyone like to speak to item M? Could I have a motion?
Motion approved consent agenda, item M.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace. A second. Mayor, make him a second. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you guys need to carry your conversation outside. I'm sorry. I apologize. Brings us back to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda minus item?
C.
I've got it written down. Motion to further consent agenda, item A, B, E, F, G, H, I, J.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Trace, a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Brings us to the area of public hearings. Item number one, Madam Clerk?
First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash zero four. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending an ordinance which assigns a zoning district of planned unit development to Anthem Park, located east of the Florida Turnpike, west of Old Canoe Creek Road. Described further herein, providing for approval of the revisions of the final master plan, providing for filing the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, conflicts, and effective date.
Good evening. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. The applicant has requested that this item be continued to June tenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Do I have a motion for continuance?
Hi. I, I, I'm going to make a motion, but, but I wanted to make a comment on it. So I saw one of the previous layouts, and it's got giant parking areas, which I know we want the parking, but I would like to see, like, rear-loaded products on alleyways, which I've been told they don't have that product, but I don't know how hard it is to get that product. But I, that's what I would prefer to see on this, is the rear-loaded, because they just look better and you don't have a sea of parking. What they're going to end up is these huge parking areas that I don't think anybody will use. You know, people are, like, to park right by their unit and they're not going to walk, you know, a mile. So that's just my comment, but I'll make a motion to continue it to June tenth.
Miss Matheny, the applicant is here, so.
Well, and again, the reason why.
I'm just making my comment.
But as you know, part of the reason why these have been continued is because there's only four of you up there, so. And all the items on the public hearing agenda have been asked to continue for that same reason. I think Miss Matheny is simply just expressing her thoughts,
I'm just giving my comment.
which the applicant certainly is glad to hear.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Madam Clerk, you read items two, three, and four.
First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash thirteen. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately thirteen point fifty-seven acres identified as Center Lake Ranch Park, parcel located east of Twelve Oaks Road and south of Handsome Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter one seven one point zero four four Florida statutes. First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash fourteen. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of mixed use to approximately thirteen point fifty-seven acres identified as Center Lake Ranch Park Parcel, located east of Twelve Oaks Road, south of Handsome Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability, effects, severability, copies on file, and effective date. First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash fifteen. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of mixed, mixed use compatible with mixed use, future land use designation change, adopted by ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash fourteen for approximately thirteen point fifty-seven acres identified as Center Lake Ranch Park Parcel, located east of Twelve Oaks Road and south of Handsome Road, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map, following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. The applicant has requested that item ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash thirteen be continued. They also requested that ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash fourteen be continued, and requested ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash fifteen be continued to June tenth.
I believe we can continue all three, vote on all three at the same time?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion that we continue these three items to June the tenth?
Question.
Mr. Trace, Councilmember Trace?
So it looks like we have some folks in the audience that wish to speak on this item. Is it possible for us to take some public comment?
Either continue it or you don't, and I think the, the, and that's the problem with it. So they're advertised public hearings. I get it, but our recommendation is you, you continue it, and then they, unfortunately, they'd have to come back.
It's getting to be a lot of running back and forth for the citizens.
They're going to come back anyway.
I understand that, but the main reason, again, of course, is that you only have four council members present and not a full council. And as we said before, a two-two vote is a denial, and, and the applicant deserves to have a full council address an item, which is why they're asking for the continuance.
Yeah, I just don't think it's, it's kind of unfortunate for residents to drive all the way over here, sit here for an hour and not get a chance to speak, so.
We need to try and catch stuff like that at the beginning and tell them.
It's up to the council or how you want to hear it.
Well, and I just don't want to do something to open up, us up to legal action or challenges or anything if you're, if it, if it's testimony that's outside of the normal public hearing. I don't, I don't know how that works, so.
And that's the risk. I can't gauge for you what the risk of that is. I can just tell you that our general theory, general advice always has been to the council, either hear it or you continue it. And you can't do sort of a combination of both, so. But it's up to the council. If you want to hear from the citizens, it's up to you, and we can just, yeah.
Well, I think it needs to be when we have the full council here. I'm sorry that you're here, and we feel like you've wasted your time, but we'll give you an opportunity to certainly comment on this later. Could I entertain a motion for?
Was there a date certain? I don't.
For the continuance.
Seven, please.
Was there a date certain?
June tenth.
June tenth.
June tenth. Do I have a motion?
Motion to continue ordinance twenty-one, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen to June tenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Anyone has a motion from Councilmember Trace for a continuance, a second from Councilmember Matheny, Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
There are no council action items at this time. Mr. Manzera, do you have anything for us?
I do not, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Sturgeon, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. As I was preparing the agenda for the CRA meeting next week, something came up about the downtown Phase Two. It's went back to FDOT for additional comments, and I just want to say, that's what happens when we take state money and they keep coming back and forth with different opinions and changes to the plans. But it's going to be my recommendation at the CRA, I'm just giving you a pre-brief, that we continue that and not start it till after the first year. We're going to be right in the middle of Christmas season and fall, and I think it might serve us well to delay it to start, go ahead and approve the contract and start it in January, because I don't want to have a mess down there in holidays. So we'll come back, and like I said, we'll have more details in, at the CRA meeting. I just wanted to give you a pre-brief on that, because I gave you a schedule, and then we had a change, and it came back today that they had, they needed six more weeks of review.
Councilmember Trace, would you like to ask a question?
I hundred percent agree. I don't want to shut that down during the busiest time of the year, especially with the last year. Is there any risk of losing the, the state money?
It's my understanding, no. We'll have to do another extension with FDOT, but we're so far along in the project, we see no change. That's two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. I think we've expended about two hundred thousand of that, so we should be good.
Okay, and we still have, are still having the CRA meeting next week?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace?
Oh, we're already on that, so. I just want to take a minute to thank staff. I mean, you guys put in long hours. Last year's been crazy. All kinds of issues always come up, and just thank you guys for what you guys do for the city and the residents. That's it.
Councilmember Cooper?
Mr. Sturgeon, you and I talked about what's going on yesterday for the meeting on New York Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Can you expand on that a little bit?
As far.
Parking facility. We don't have enough parking spots.
We're actually.
I had twenty cars parking on my, my property last night, yesterday, and Mr. Manzera says they can't indemni- indemnify.
Indemnify.
Indemnify. Myself, as far as having twenty cars that were parked there last night, and this is a city function item last night, and you all allowed twenty cars parked on my property, so. I have a problem with that. And you and I, we're okay. You're going to cover it over or whatever, but I still don't think there's going to be enough room when you close off Pennsylvania and New York Avenue.
So, at the CRA meeting Thursday, we're also coming back with an alternative parking plan to use the parking behind the hotel. That's all going to get cleaned up. That's an additional, I want to say eighty parking places. We're also planning to put in a parking garage. They're actually doing the plans for that right now. So we have an alternative parking plan. We're still, and we're also still working with the church on East Tenth Street to get an alternative parking plan also. Well, I think so. I think once we get the parking garage in place, and I, I can't give you a timeline on that since it's in planning right now. And we have to do the funding and all that and come back to you guys with that plan.
All the alleyway for citizens that have got personal properties there.
Correct, and as I told you last night, that is private property. You know, we didn't allow people there. They just assumed they could park there. We weren't directing people there, but we'll make sure that's cordoned off in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I offered if you all want to indemnify, I said it's okay.
Yes, sir.
But if you're not, I'm not going to say no.
Yes, sir.
Not done, not going to do it. I don't think anybody would want to do that.
Yes, sir.
You know, if you fall and slip and have a broken ankle, that's me. Me would go looking at you, and so, that's not cool. You're telling me the St. Cloud Hotel's moving forward a little bit more?
Yes, sir. They're supposed to be putting the fourth story on it next week and then framing the roof in and then drying it in. And they'll come back after the rainy season, if it ever starts raining, and then come back and finish it up in the fall.
And the, and the power, power plant?
They're still moving forward with the assessment on that, and as we agreed quarterly, we'll give you an update.
How long do you think it's going to take before they shovel-ready?
Well, it's, the whole process is five to the assessment and know where the areas of concern are marked out.
So it's going to be at least a year or two before they start digging?
Yes, sir. I think that's a fair assessment.
Okay. I did notice you and I talked about down at the lakefront, at the swimming hole down here. The weeds are, they are encroaching on the east side. They're coming west, and they are coming bad.
I'll ask Ms. Holt to look at it and have our weed control people go out there and address that.
That's, can, those weeds.
I saw it the other day.
Those weeds can come down. Those are.
They spray them and then they let them.
That's it. Thanks, sir.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I have one question and one update. So, we had the workshop recently for the historic inventory in, in St. Cloud, and I had talked to the city manager if we could find the funding to go ahead and complete the inventory that she discussed during the workshop. You know, we, we did the things with it. There's a lot of the kit homes outside of the overlay. And the estimate I heard to finalize all of that is fifty thousand dollars. So I wanted to see if the other council members were interested in finding the funding. There's possibility we could use CRA dollars, because we have some historic money in there, or if we were able to find it somewhere else. I think it's really important to, like, finish the inventory, and the city manager also committed, based on our direction in the workshop, to work forward with the, the tax credit program for the historic buildings. So I would like to just see if there was two others that were interested in finishing that historic inventory.
I have no problem with it. I would support.
Yeah, I mean, I'd come back with a proposal and the kind of the scope and the area, and I think that's, I think it's good. I just would like also to figure out what the incentives are, the tax credit thing for the whole historic area and funding mechanism and all that, just the whole approach.
So you'd, the tax credit piece is, is a process that has to, we have to engage the county into it, we have to work. So is the direction the council, you want to move forward with that piece?
He felt like he had that from our workshop.
Yeah, I wasn't there. I apologize. I apologize.
So that's kind of a separate issue, but I would like to
That was clear.
move forward with completing the inventory.
Okay.
If we can find the funds. So the update that I wanted to give is, as you know, the city partnered with the county to move forward the PDNE for Canoe Creek Road. So the new PPL list, which is the priority, the project priority li- priority list, sorry, I can't talk today, just came out, and Canoe Creek Road is number two for funding. So previous to us putting the PDNE out there, Canoe Creek Road wasn't even on the list, and so us moving that forward has got us at number two for funding. The funding is twenty-five, twenty-six, and it's for construction, so it's important that we keep pushing the project forward through the PDNE and then design as well. That's not design dollars, that's construction dollars. So I'd like to see if we could write a, a letter from the city, having the mayor sign it, you know, asking the county to, you know, play off of, we've already paid for the PDNE. Can you make sure that you prioritize the funding for the design to keep up with the track for the, the PPL? I think it's an amazing win. It's like that strategy worked. We're, we're on the list.
Mayor, could I ask Councilmember a question? Is that county funding or is that state fund?
That's, that's FDOT metro plan.
Okay.
It's trip funding, I believe.
Okay.
So I thought that was great news.
Excellent.
Real good news.
Good news.
Thank you for that bait.
And I don't have anything else that we haven't already covered.
Thank you.
Comes to our information section and report section. Monday, May thirty-first, twenty-twenty, city offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day holiday. There will be a Memorial Day wreath laying ceremony down at Mount Peace at ten AM, but we invite the public to. Thursday, June third, there'll be a community redevelopment agency meeting at six thirty PM at City Hall Council Chambers. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, June the fourth, fifth, and sixth, twenty-first, Institute for Electoral Municipal Officials at Palm Beach Gardens. Thursday, June the tenth, there will be a city council meeting at six thirty here at City Hall Chambers. Thursday, June nineteenth, there will be a city council workshop at three PM here at City Hall Council Chambers. It will also be my anniversary. I'm sorry, I had to throw that in. We made a procl- issued a proclamation in recognition of Zabrina Elf Helmer. I'd like to remind that the warrant list number twelve, that report is available. Louis Antonio Stotello of the Environmental Utilities Department was selected for the Employee of the Month Award for the month of April twenty twenty-one, and congratulations to Louis Antonio. With that, there are no other agenda items. We will be adjourned.